Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting on Wednesday, April 26th at 8:30 a.m. As always, we will start with an invocation and a prayer. Is our pastor here? Thank you. We have vicar Kerry Tru with Trinity Lutheran Church. Welcome today, and everyone please stand.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and all, thank you for this opportunity. It's a pleasure to be here. Let us pray. Lord God, we lift before you the public servants in this city of Bradenton that they may do their work with wisdom, charity, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life. Drive us from cynicism and selfishness, where distrust twists our thinking. Grant healing and illumination. Where impossibilities close every door and window. Grant imagination and resistance. Where spirits are daunted and weakened. Grant soaring wings and strengthened dreams. For you, Almighty God, nothing is too difficult. Give us grace to live together in unity and peace, as you intended, for your beloved children. Amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
We do not have any proclamations or presentations today.
Okay, at this time, we'll call on citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting of any non-agenda items. Agenda items, future agenda items, or topics relevant to the city. So first, I have Glenn Giabellina. And you'll come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Good morning.
For the record, Glenn Giabellina. Glad to be here. Finally done my house, I got some time to come and visit you guys. So, one of the things I wanted to bring up is that when you do development and you do mixed use, really, it should be mixed use. This project here, I think, one, I think it was a mistake to sell this property, but that being said, you are moving forward with the sale. But you might want to be more mindful of the negotiation power this city board has. You could've went to the developer, and I heard him last week, he says, 300 million, we don't need any incentives. We don't need any gap financing. We're done. We only got a million nine out of the county. But that being said, you should, if you're going to put out a request for proposals, and they're going to be mixed use, it should truly be mixed use. Okay, you know, you want to put 200 units there? We need 10 to 25 percent of workforce housing. And it could be at your 120, right? Their moral compass has to be in line of the city's vision. Who would not want a schoolteacher, or firefighter, or sheriff, or city of Bradenton police officer, living in that building? You know, I'm old school. When I saw a cop car in the driveway, we liked it. We felt safe. But those people are out of their market because the negotiations were to sell it and do what you want with it. I think on your future projects, when you do that, if you're going to do mixed use, make it mixed use for everybody. I think you're going to lose the downtown charm with this larger building going up. Personal opinion, taking away from the waterfront, but that's mine. But all I'm saying is, when you do mixed use, you need to get affordable workforce housing in there. I don't care if it's a sliver of 10 percent. It's the effort. And believe me, you will find a developer to come forward and say, you know what? That's a great idea. And if we're going to get incentives for those 10 to 25 percent of the apartments, God bless the city for giving us incentives. 25, Laura, that's not going to break the bank on a large development like that. But it's sending a message to developers, you want to do business with us in our town? We're looking out for our own. We're looking out for the fire, EMS, schoolteachers. They all deserve to live in these developments. So, glad to be back and thank you for your time.
Thank you, yes, sir. Next, we have Bill Sanders. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
We only get three minutes for non-agenda items, and then another three minutes for agenda items?
If you have, you fill out a different card.
Well, there's only one card.
No, but I'm saying a separate, second card.
Oh, I put both on the same, so.
All right, so call about the one, and then you can come back.
I agree with Bill Sanders, 2502 Riverside Drive. I agree with Glenn. And something came up yesterday in the county commissioners' meeting, that there's a property for sale right beside our golf course. And beyond me, I don't know what you're doing on that golf course and why you're studying it. I mean, why I don't know what kind of study you could do to a golf course. And, you know, some part of it's built on a landfill, so it's not a developable property unless there's somebody who's got some wild idea that I'm not familiar with. But that creek that runs through there floods quite a bit, and it's going to flood more because we're building houses all around it. And so, it was suggested by Eurofan and comrade Kevin Ben Ostenbridge that maybe the city would participate and probably make a park out of it. There are going to be some state and federal money because of the water flow through there, and the Mixons want to actually turn it back to the residents and do not want to sell it to development. They're trying to prevent it. Yes, they get more money, but that's a good citizen that thinks of the community first versus profitability. It's about 15, 16 million dollars. Bayside Church is going in on the corner where Mixon's is now. Excuse me. And it, they will have, they have furniture distribution out of there. So, that's going to be probably a good use of it. I'm not so sure. I hope that that doesn't get sold off that corner. But now's the time to negotiate from the city's standpoint with them before they get discouraged and then go to development, because we do not need any more development in there, because it's across the street. And at one time, I didn't realize it, but there was 350 acres in there by the, Mr. Mixon said yesterday, and so now it's down to about 40 acres. And it's the last of the last, probably, opportunities that the city might have to purchase property and extend that golf course or make it a park area for the community. And Ms. Coachman, it's, I think, in your ward, and it's close to your ward. So, I'd like for you to at least look into it and consider it. You don't have to buy it completely out. It's good for our water management, but I mean, the county's going to look at it as a whole to do it, but we need to have some skin in the game and decide to participate, because it will be an extension. And it would look good, because we're under park, we have not enough parks in the city, and we know that. But this would be a great boost to add 40 acres to it that's going to be non-developed. And there's wildlife in there. I challenge you to go take a tour of that area and find out how good it is for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kimla Morrell. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Kimla Morrell, 521 12th Avenue West. I'm here on behalf of Exodus Community Resources, which is at 1719 19th Street West. We are a community center. We serve the community and at-risk youth. We have a lot of programs that are helping some of the youth that are in that core area who aren't receiving anything. As you know, the Boys and Girls Club was removed, and they put a parking lot there. They didn't put anything else to replace it, taking something away good, putting into the community. They took it away and put a parking lot. I don't know what negotiations were made to improve or help with any new programs. Also, there was a community center on the corner of 13th and 1st Street. They tore that down, and nothing is there. We want to empower the youth. We want to help the youth. We want to educate the youth. We, I am not a Lone Ranger. I have other organizations that are in with me. Avenue 941, I have truly valued. These are organizations, other not-for-profit, that we have inter-agency agreements, that we are wanting to pour into the youth. There is nothing. The city of Bradenton, I'm asking you guys for $150,000 to help us with the programs. We want programs over the summer. We want programs during the year. I have a budget. I have a proposal. I would like to do a full presentation, so that I could give you more information about what we're doing, how we're helping. I know the city of Bradenton loves their citizens, and I know pouring into our youth is very important, so, to each and every one of us. So, we're asking for $150,000. If there is an agreement, I think we talked about, there was an agreement when they tore down the Boys and Girls Club, that they would put something, so I wanted to talk more with that, with you about that. We need to, Exodus, I'm sorry, I'm trying to rush you. Exodus Community Resources, we're here to encourage, we're here to educate, we're here to empower. I want to thank Mr. Perry. He did get us some computers. I will be picking those up today. We have to help the youth. We have to do something. And I am coming to the city. I am asking you, please, pour into the youth. We're pouring into so much other stuff in the community, we cannot forget our at-risk youth. We cannot forget our future, okay? So, thank you for your consideration. I will get the proposals to you all, and please consider helping Exodus Community Resources. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, and I hope you stay around till the end, when we have the comments from the council. So, all right, next would be Debbie Wilcox. You state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Debbie Wilcox, 334 Castaway Cave Drive, Bradenton, Florida. I'm here today to bring your attention to, and actually contest, the construction of Harborsound Court. Harborsound Court is a single, very narrow lane, and it is the only access for the subdivision, and there are four very large, single-family homes planned. I come today with the issues. I've laid them out in a document for you, along with photos, so that you can actually see this single lane and how ridiculous it is that it was approved to service a large subdivision like this. But I come also with a recommendation. I'm asking the city require that subdivision to construct the proper turnaround at the south end of the lot, to comply with city and county standards for required emergency vehicles, fire apparatus, and handle expected traffic flow. The use of a single lane for that community is a serious issue for many reasons. I'd like to just share a couple of them. The lane doesn't meet the requirements in Section 42-43 of the city code for fire apparatus. It's a dead end. It has no turnaround. The lane doesn't meet the city requirements for safe and quick entry and exit of the property at all times. The granting of the variance was detrimental to the public welfare and injures to other property in the area. Adjacent properties are exposed, as the city's standards for emergency services to be called upon are not being adhered to. Vehicle and pedestrian traffic has already been a problem. And there's only one home. There's only one person living there so far. But if, I've showed you pictures that you can look at of the number of vehicles that are coming in and out of the subdivision. There's already a problem with garbage collection, post office delivery, not only FedEx and Amazon deliveries. If somebody's coming in, somebody can't get out. How could a police vehicle come in when you've got four homes that have to use a single 10-foot lane? I'm here today to tell you, it's not constructed according to the permit. It's only 10 feet, and I think the rule is 12 feet. The curbs don't match the city of Bradenton's requirements. And last but not least, I wanted to mention to you that there's only one owner currently, but my understanding is that a developer from Orlando has bought one or more of the lots. Please, before any more permits are issued here, can you take a look at requiring the proper turnaround? It's important to the other residents that are here. And again, I thank you for your attention. I've already mentioned this to Mr. Brown, and Jane to you as well. And I don't want to complain, but I want to make a recommendation. A turnaround is important. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Glenn Giabellina.
For the record, Glenn Giabellina, I'll make this short. I want to talk about 6C and the incentives for your down payment rental system. I've read the 30 pages. I think you've got a lot of good stuff in there. I think that this, the city will benefit by this. The $3,000 rental system is a home run. People are struggling for their first last in security, much less make the monthly rent. The market rents are pretty much out of control, and this is going to help them. Given your down payment assistance program, like what I see, I think you're going to run out of money quick, but you can't help who, as far as the funds go. I'll give you an example. The open house we had in Palmetto y'all came to? That's sold. We had $75,000 down payment from the county. That brought that house down to a buck and a half. We sold it to a bus driver that works for the county. Those are affordable houses. And with those kind of incentives and down payment assistance, they can afford to own their own home. So, that's the direction we need to go. And on top of it, that was surplus property. So, the cost of the land was taken out of that sale price. You guys got some surplus property. You know, a lot's 40, 50 grand. You take that out and pass those savings on to the homeowner, you have an affordable house. And I think that's the direction you need to go. And with 6C, there's a lot of good stuff in there, so, I like what I read. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Keith Green. Please come forward. You'll have three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Keith Green, 1108 60th Avenue West, Bradenton, Florida. Just wanted to come by again to remind everyone of the upcoming First Responders Mass that will be at St. Joe's on Friday, May 19th, at 11:30 a.m. And definitely, so that everyone can see, of course, that these are the official flyers that are out for that. And I want to definitely thank the city again for their full support of this event, and we look forward to giving honor to our first responders who put their lives on the line for us every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, did you have a second thing you wanted to talk about on the agenda?
On the agenda or the?
The whole agenda, it's changed, so if you have something that, you know, it's, it's... So, you state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Bill Sanders, 2502 Riverside Drive. You've changed the format here a little bit, so you're confusing me.
Been several weeks.
Hasn't been. Well, it's not what it was when I was there, but it's confusing. It's confusing to the public, sir, so. I thought there was, is there code enforcement presentations today?
Eight A.
Yeah. Let me speak about that. I don't know what's happening with our new system of code enforcement, or non-enforcement, or whatever it is. But it seems to have escalated in the last few months. We had one guy come in here a couple of months ago and said that he was told to purchase a property, and that he would fix it up, and the fees would've been waived. And that's always been the policy of the city, that if you'll fix up the problems of your property, we'll go along with you, and we'll waive any fees, just normal cost of operating and to do the things, which generally is very minimal. So, he walked in here, and I was surprised that he was being sued. And how did he, and he says he called down here 10 times. And Mr. Perry got up and went over to him. I don't know if he fixed it or not, but there's something wrong with the process when that happens. And then yesterday, in the Bradenton Hailer, I read where a lady, I understand she was out of town, and she maybe neglected her property, but you just don't sue an 80-year-old lady that's, and I don't know if that picture of the house was current, but it sure didn't look very unkept to me. It said it started out in 2014, it's mold. Well, this is South Florida. There's mold probably on the front bumper of my car. That's just life in South Florida, you know? Why would we even, I've heard this over in River Isle. They've came to me and complained and says, what are you doing? Mold? Yeah, fine, we'll take care of it, but it's there every, you have to do it once or twice a season. But to take the person's property without, there's something wrong. It needs to be fixed.
Thank you. All right, I have no other cards. Council comments? All right.
Aye.
All right, go ahead, Mrs. Coachman.
In reference to Ms. Morrell, you were preaching to the choir. There has been quite a bit of conversation about the needs. I think I probably definitely started when I first took office, and there's definitely a vision, and also a mayor and council that are quite supportive of what you are speaking of. I don't know if Mr. Perry or the mayor would like to expound on that a bit, but...
Yes, I can. Very, very excited to. So, first off, the Boys and Girls Club did not leave the area. The building left the area. And obviously, I was very active in that. We went from serving 95 kids a day at the Boys and Girls Club of a building that was tired. You know, the building was very tired, and 90 of those kids were being bused in. So, there was only five neighborhood kids. And those numbers, we stressed over for years as a Boys and Girls Club board, of how we get more neighborhood kids to want to come to the club. Well, you know, all things were better than going to that club at that moment. So, a deal was made that we were going into two schools at that time, Rogers and Orange Ridge, and we started serving 500 kids a day in the neighborhood at those neighborhood schools. So, and Rogers right now is a huge success. I know Chief Beavens was there last week, giving out awards, and if you talk to the teachers at Rogers, and you talk to anybody there, the kids at the school, they love the club there. So, we didn't abandon it, but I'm going to agree with you that I'm very supportive of school programs for the Boys and Girls Club, but I still want a building. And, you know, I think the buildings are what really makes that neighborhood club. Last week, or last meeting, Mr. Perry brought out our city park concept, which we've been meeting with the county commissioners, it's came up to the council, of how to transform that neighborhood, not only sports and entertainment for everyone, but also how to re-engage the community, so we can start getting the neighborhood kids in and running out those bad guys. Because there's a lot of bad guys in that neighborhood. And we have to put positive reinforcement into it. Yesterday, at our Boys and Girls Club breakfast, I mentioned it. I mention it everywhere I go. Government is slow, so I don't disagree with you on that part of what we can do and how we're going to do it. But I think we have momentum now, and it's going to tie in a collaboration of city, county, federal, state, school board, not-for-profits, PAL, anybody that we can bring in to bring some sort of community center back there. Bradenton Village, you know, if you look at the plans for Bradenton Village, things are coming out about Rab, which is a remodel of Bradenton Village, as well as homeownership on the property that's there. So, I'd want people to think that just because you don't see us doing things or talking about it, that is a mission in life that myself and this council will have to push forward. So, keep doing what you're doing. Yesterday, we had a big meeting with several mayors and county staff about homeless, because that plays right into the whole area, and your name was mentioned a couple of times in the group that we're trying to get, because if we don't have the collaboration of all of us, it won't happen. And government can't do it by itself. Need the not-for-profits. So, yes, what you're saying is heard, but it's been being worked. So, thank you, keep it up, and I know my excitement can go a long time on this, but we're going to keep working it. So, is that okay, Ms. Coachman?
Yeah. As fearful as I am about saying, stay tuned, because government does move very slowly, I have confidence that staying tuned will be a benefit.
Oh, oh, well, we can't, we can't dialogue this way, so, all right, thank you. Did you have anything else, or I wanted to?
It was just, also, when Mr. Giabellina came up and talked about the housing support, I appreciate you giving us thumbs up on that. And I had a few other things, so I'll let other council members.
All right, anyone else before I finish?
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
I actually also would like to speak to Mr. Galbini's comment regarding the item 6C. I wanted to point out, I was actually going to pull it, just to point out that recently appointed to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and that committee is working on several items in connection with that packet and its recommendations, including talking to our planning department about inclusionary zoning, as well as some other, the permanent supportive housing items in the packet. So, again, stay tuned, I guess, to some extent there. One citizen noted to me that regarding assistance for disaster and housing rehabilitation going up to 140% AMI. The reason for that is that when you're in a disaster situation, you would have to amend the plan to provide for anything above the 80%. And when you're in a disaster situation, that is difficult, and timing is of the essence. So, you, the theory is you ask for what you think you might need, and we are prioritizing, though, those that qualify as very low and low. So, just as a reassurance to people that are following affordable housing as a subject matter and what we're doing there. And I agree with you, the rental assistance and the foreclosure prevention is crucial, because homelessness and affordable housing go hand in hand. So, I just wanted to make those notes on that item, and now I will not pull it from the agenda.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else before I finish? All right, thank you. Couple things. Obviously, a lot of things are working and getting done as we move, and then it comes up to the council, but you've got to keep things moving. And I think with civility in the room, some of the citizen comments are answered differently, as long as there's civility in talking through it. So, one of the things that Mr. Giabellina brought up about this property, to be seen, so, you know, there's things that sometimes can work behind the scenes without actually getting it until it comes to the council and presents, because obviously, any affordable housing that we can do, whether it's given incentives or not, we want affordable housing. So, we've got 920 that's going right now, that's 137 workforce housing. We've got Riverview 6 that's going, that's affordable housing. And then we have the other project going down on the right. I can't think of the name of it, but it's still, no, the Met is on 14th. That's our big thing. But the other one that's going down, that HTG has just broken ground. People are starting to ask questions now, because it's right, Astoria. Astoria, right. So, that's, I think, 84, more of a senior affordable housing, so, which the county participated in, Riverview 6 and Astoria. So, we are working that surplus property. That's a conversation Mr. Perry and I had even again yesterday about looking at what we've got to make sure we can do it. As far as the Mixon property, yes, that's been something that I've been aware of for a while with it. There's a lot of propaganda that others put out there that's just not true, but it's a county piece of property, so, if the county is starting to work on something, and I saw yesterday, very much so that they were supportive of it, we will work in with a lot of plans that I think that the city can be involved in, as well as working with them, but that just came out yesterday. As far as code enforcement, we're always talking about code enforcement, and we listen to the residents and... listen to the residents and especially neighbors a lot of times. And that's a process that goes through that we've got to keep it going. So, you know, that's something that, that, that actually was voted on, the, the person that was talked about in the newspaper was actually something that was put into place in 2019, I believe. So there's some things there that, you know, keep working. The, and then obviously, probably would have to get with our planning about streets and fire department and all that, about how the size of streets are and all that. So I know that's where we had kind of sent it before. So probably follow up with that with maybe, I don't know if Robin, Miss Singer needs to follow up with Ms. Wilcox or what? And I think we already have, so. So that's what I'd thought, so, yeah.
The property and the five lots, as well as an access easement were plotted. I, I can't recall the year, but it's been some years. The fire department has required sprinkling in the homes because it is not a public right-of-way at, at the front of it and because it doesn't have a turnaround at the end. So because it is a private access easement, it's not necessarily required to follow the right-of-way requirements for the construction of the road. So to that end, you know, fire has looked at it, you know, and will continue to look at it as the homes are developed. But they have taken precautions to make sure that that's...
And the houses are sprinkled, so that's a very important for fire part of it.
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you.
And solid waste pickup and all that.
They've, yeah, I think that had been worked out with smaller trucks, yeah. So it's a little different. All right, and then the other thing is, is the first responders mass, I believe on the 19th of May. So obviously, we always want to honor and support our first responders. So that's, you know, a great thing to go to and, and show support at that time, so. But thank you for bringing that up. All right, that's all I have. And Mrs. Melton?
Item 6 is the consent agenda. And I'd like to bring to your attention that item 6H was revised to reflect a corrected resolution number. The correct resolution number is 2350. There were no other revisions.
If I wanted to...
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion. And so, a motion, and if there's something that wants to be pulled, just do it in your motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items 6B through 6J.
6B through, so pulling A. Okay.
Just for a quick little comment.
Yep, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Kramer first with approving consent agenda B through J, pulling A for comment. Hearing no discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward 2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
And 1.
Yes.
Approved. Ms. Moore?
I just wanted to point out, I've had a couple of citizens note to me that they would like to see us actively pursue minority or women-owned vendors. And I noted in this packet that the Sarasota School Board includes a minority business certification in their application. So I pointed it out to Mr. Perry and I'm just pointing it out to you all that maybe that's something that we can move towards looking at in the future. And that was really my only comment.
Okay. All right, any other comment? So motion to approve A?
I move to approve A.
Thank you. All right, seconded by Ms. Coachman. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
Approved. 5 to 0. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is item 8A, and it's a presentation on current code enforcement activities.
Thank you.
My name is Volker Reis. I'm the Compliance Manager for the City of Bradenton. Mr. Perry asked us to give you a brief presentation for code enforcement. I took a stab at it. Dr. St. Lucy took a stab at it. And Robin created the end product with some revisions. So this is a team presentation, a team effort. So I, some of it is mine, so it's, it's, so this is our presentation. We have a mission statement. Council in early, in the early 2000s asked our strategy and our mission statement at that time, and it still holds true, is to improve the physical components of the City of Bradenton by creating ongoing partnerships with the community through education and effective code enforcement initiatives while enhancing integrity and professionalism of the code enforcement team. That is our mission statement, this is us. And it was true in 2002, I believe, it was shortly before I started working here. It's still true today. Our responsibilities are, some of it you already know, so I don't mean to put you to sleep, but just to reinforce what we're doing. We enforce the International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by the City of Bradenton. I think it was adopted also in the early 2000s. I think the 2003 code was the first one. It comes out every three years it updates, every two years or three years it updates. We always have the most current version, you, I always come up with it to please adopt the most current version. The current version is the 2021. We assist the Community Redevelopment Agency in eliminating slumming blight conditions through enforcement of city codes and promotion of the CRA improvement programs. Our relationship with the CRAs was always there and good, and we are deepening that relationship as we speak. There's more to come with that. We are working closer and closer with the CRAs in the CRA areas. We work with other groups in the city, Building Division, Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, addressing unsafe structures and nuisance conditions and everything else. Every day I get something from the police or Public Works or somebody else in the building. So we're working very closely. We're not in a, in a bubble or in a silo. It's an advantage of being here physically at City Hall. Before my time, code enforcement was remotely, somewhere in, I think in the old building on, on 9th Street, the old housing building. And one of the, Robin's predecessors brought the group over here physically. It does help because we're in much closer contact with people. We have started coordinating with Manatee County Code Enforcement more than ever. I have been with the city for almost 20 years. And what we have done in the last maybe six to nine months in cooperation with code enforcement is more than we did combined with over the last 18 years. My colleague, I have two colleagues, Manatee County has a split-up code enforcement group. They have code enhancement and code enforcement. My two colleagues over there, I meet with them quarterly at the, at the county to talk about issues that are, that they are having that are coming up or that we have that are coming up. We're just, you know, just the shop talk, basically. We have done two joint operations with the county because in a lot of areas, the county and, and the city, we, we connect and they do, they, they do something on their side and it makes no sense if we don't do it on our side. So we have done, and we will do more with that. It's, it's a great cooperation with George and Chris. They had some changes there and it's better than it's ever been. And we will probably do even more with them in, in the future. Our current staff is, we have me, we have a code enforcement coordinator, she does all our paperwork, does a lot of our phone calls, does, there's a lot of our documents. We have a senior code enforcement officer, our code enforcement coordinator is Kimberly. Our senior code enforcement officer is Mike. He does, he trains new code enforcement officers, particularly mainly. He's the first contact for code enforcement officers for the, for things that don't necessarily have to come to me. And he works our, in addition to an area that he has, he works our most complex cases. We have some cases that are research intense. And it's, it's better if somebody who knows more does that than if we have a, a different code enforcement officer. Do it, it works well. We have done it now for about a year with that, that setup. We have three other code enforcement officers, they are assigned three geographical areas. I made in the, in the proposal for the budget, I made a recommendation to hire an additional code enforcement officers who work special assignments like signs and zoning issues, landscaping issues, and a weekend day. So if that position were to be approved by council, we would specifically stipulate that that person has to work a weekend day every, every week and would have a day or a week off. It's, it's needed, we don't have enough coverage on the weekend. And a lot of it falls then on the Police Department that we could take care of if we'd have the staff in. We are members of the Florida Association of Code Enforcement and the Tampa Bay Association of Code Enforcement. The Tampa Bay Association of Code Enforcement is our local chapter. The Florida Association of Code Enforcement is almost 30 years old now. They, they have four certifications that they provide for code enforcement officers. Fundamentals of Code Enforcement, Administrative Aspects of Code Enforcement, Legal Aspects of Code Enforcement, and Officer Safety and Field Applications. Sometimes referred to Level 1 through 4. We do, we have, Mike and I have all levels of certification. Jermaine has all levels of certification. Nisha has all of them but Officer Safety. We have not been able, we had her sign up for a class, she, she unfortunately couldn't attend it because of a, a, an illness. And we're looking for a class, for whoever even signed up to Pensacola if necessary. Our new code enforcement officer, Doug, doesn't have any. We're looking for fundamentals of code enforcement for him. We, we thought we had a class, but it's already full. These are each of them one-week classroom classes. So they are 40 hours of classroom classes with a test at the end of the day. It's a closed book, two-hour closed book test. You have to get 75%, I believe, or maybe even 80. So you, it's, it's not a, a, anything that is easy. It's hard, it's a book to study. Doug's already studying. It's a book to stick to study. It's, it's a serious certification. I also, I'm the only one who also has the ICC Certified Housing and Property Maintenance Inspector. I would like to see that for more code enforcement officers, but we'll have to work through that maybe in late 2020. We have equipment, of course. We, we have at the moment Ford Escape vehicles that we use, we have laptops and monitors, we have the new cell phones that, that the city gave us, which are great. They, they help us a great deal, they make, make our life much easier. We have a light meter and we recommend, and I put it in the budget for, for the next budget year, to add a noise meter. The Police Department has a noise meter, we should have one too. If there's noise issues coming up during business hours, we should be able to do that. We should not need the Police Department to do that for us. So we should have that equipment and we should have the, I'm, I'm not quite sure if we're going to train everybody on it, if we train our new specialist on it. We'll see who we train on it. But there's of course training and, and potentially even a certification involved in that. But we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. I know that they have to be calibrated and all that. So we'll, the Police Department, I'm sure they, they already have experience with that. They'll help us, tell us what, what we need to do. We have a, we have an initiative, Mr. Perry tasked us a, a short while ago to memorialize what our strategy and our initiative is. I call it, or we call it the Strategic Proactive Neighborhood Inspections, SPNIs. We have a code enforcement off, our code enforcement officers will address a particular set of violations in a defined geographical area. The area will, and I will show you a map in a, in a moment here, the code enforcement officer will go through, through an area and progress. We have talked about a lot when we, when we initiated this. And we thought, in the past, we have, when we went somewhere for those type of inspections, we wrote everything up, absolutely everything. And we want to, for a period of time, focus on a, on a specific set of violations like outside storage, vehicles, and see if, unless there's a real big problem with the home that it's unsafe, we want to see when we do that and when we go through the city, are we going to see a difference in, in, in the, in the maintenance of the properties? I can tell you, early indications, very early indications are positive. I was out with, with Miss Singer the other day, well, a couple of weeks ago, and we drove down one of the streets where one of our code enforcement officers had gone through. It looked different, let's put it that way. There were no hurricanes there or no, no this and that. So it, it was a visual difference. We'll see what happens. I want to see, maybe when we have a half a year data, if it makes a difference or not. On that note, we have gotten a lot more active with Mr. Jim Mora. I, I have a close partnership with him. If there's trash, if our code enforcement officer goes out and there's a pile of mattresses because somebody just moved out, I always communicate that with Public Works. Jim asked me to do that and they pick it up very quickly now because it's just part of our work and their work. So it, we're, we're optimistic about that. Here's the quick little map that I wanted to show you. You can see, we, we have our three code enforcement officers. Doug is moving west of 14th Street towards the river. And once he gets there, he'll move south, southbound again between 22nd and 26th. Nisha is moving east of 14th Street to 9th, north to the river, which right now, I think they both are at about, I want to say either 17th or 15th. I think Nisha is already at 15th Avenue. So she's moving north, she's going to make it into the Village of the Archio pretty quick. And then she'll turn around and move south again. Jermaine right now is moving east, north of Manatee Avenue, along the river. And then once he gets to the Braden River or, or the Mobile Home Park there, he's going to jump Manatee Avenue east and he's going to move west again. So that's the plan. We, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew. We work a couple of blocks a month because it's just, otherwise it's too, I'm already out of green hangers, so I have to order new green hangers. It's, it's just, it's an administrative job too. Everything needs to be re-inspected and it, so we'll get it done, but it'll, it's, it's not something we can, we can't do the whole area in, in a month. It's just impossible for us to do. Another, the other new initiatives, we have changed our monthly reporting a little bit. I don't know if you have seen it. I've created some maps, I've created some charts. Mr. Perry tasked us with that too because he wanted us to have more meaningful reports. And I think they are. Put it on the website now, I worked with Jeannie. And I haven't got any feedback yet from anybody, from the public, but they are there and we, please bear with us, we, Jeannie and I took our first stab at it in, in April. The main, the May numbers will come out next week, so we'll see if we have to make a tweak to that or not. We will have enhanced cooperation with neighborhood associations. I have two neighborhood association people who call me a lot now, and I, I like that. I have one in, in Ms. Coach's area, Mr. Kevin, Kevin is his name, Kevin Martin. He calls me all the time and, he's a nice guy. He's a, and he understands code enforcement. Sometimes you see these neighborhood association people, they, they don't have a clear understanding. He does. He does have a clear understanding what we do, how we do it, what we can do. And I have a gentleman on Braden River Lakes who calls me, and the name escapes me, I'm sorry, but he calls me all the time too. Kerdupa, we know him, I forgot what his name was. Great guy. We do want to have a dedicated code enforcement officer for sign violations, zoning violations, construction work without a permit. We have a lot of, construction work without a permit is right now something that is part of what we do. And we don't do it very proactively. We do it usually based on complaints. It's, it's, it's an issue we need to address, especially on weekend days. And I think a new code enforcement officer is going to help us with that. Our approach to construction work without a permit is easy because we say if you are a contractor, you... a contractor, you, you should have known that you needed a permit, and our, we are a little bit more punitive with that. If you are a live-in homeowner and you do construction work, you probably didn't know that you needed a permit in the city. So these people will have a, an opportunity to do it right without a penalty. So that's, that's our approach to that. We, we just tell them, hey, you need to stop. Please come into the city and get your permit. So they, we're, we're not gonna be punitive with that. We, we will deal, we, we will have enhanced cooperation with other code enforcement agencies in the county. I talked about that, and we will be addressing issues specific to the CRA areas with input from CRA staff. We, we need to know, what do you want us to do? What do you want us to focus on? And we will focus on that then in, in those particular areas. This is a map that you might or might have not seen. This one will come out every month. It shows you, Craig generates this. You can click on it, and you can see what's behind it, has violations behind it. This is March because it has a three on it, so these are all the violations that were opened or closed in March. So you can kinda see a, a cluster of, of, of issues and, and, and locations. Take a look at it. If you have any questions, it's probably better to talk to me separately, and I will give you all the details about it. These are the twenty twenty-two statistics, and this is calendar twenty twenty-two, not fiscal. We had five hundred and eighty-seven complaints and two thousand two hundred and twenty-five proactive inspections. We expect the number of complaints to probably decrease even more because of new legislation. We don't, we don't want, when our, when our complaints decrease, our proactive will go up. We, we usually have, in a, in an average year, when we are fully staffed, which we weren't in twenty twenty-two, we usually have between twenty-nine-hundred to three-thousand-four-hundred a year. That's usual, that's our, our number fully staffed. Here you can see, where did we get our complaints? For most people, call us. You, I mean, by far, most people call us. Some people call, people send us emails, internal means, these are not, these are complaints that come from Public Works or from some other internal person, walk-ins, we even get a few. Our website is hopelessly underutilized with only eighteen. This is the, the website that you can, you can complain or bring up issues for Public Works and everything. It's hopelessly underutilized with only eighteen a year. Elected officials, that's you if you come to us. The county is when somebody from the county has an issue and calls, the fire department, it speaks for itself. We even got one by snail mail. So that, that's, I think it's interesting that we have to have somebody still who answers the phone, because we have two hundred and forty-seven a year, and people wanna talk to somebody on the phone. They don't wanna, some people leave a message, but people wanna have an answer right away. These are our greatest hits. With the new system, we will break those down even more. Exterior of a structure means just that, paint, windows, every, everything to the exterior. Permit checks are when we go out and we check if somebody has a permit, either proactively or in response to a complaint. You can see overgrown yards, outside storage. You can see the whole, no water. I don't know if we have chickens on here. Usually, we didn't have a lot of chickens, junk vehicles, stop, stop work orders. I mean, you can just see, interior of a structure, of course, is less because we have to have access to the interior. Somebody has to give us permission to go on the inside. We can't just go on the inside. Therefore, it's, it's, it's a smaller number, obviously. No water is a violation in the city. You have to have water because it's a health and safety thing. We, we don't penalize people for not having water because it makes no sense if people can't pay their water bill, and we tell them that they need to, we fine them a hundred and fifty dollars for not paying their water bill, but what we do is, we post the property and we make a record of, have a record of it. So if something happens to an individual in that unit who stays in that unit, it will no, we, we will, we will have addressed this because we tell people, you cannot occupy the unit without water. We don't tell them to leave. We just tell them, the city, the, the city has an ordinance that you can't occupy. If people choose to stay there, that's on them. We don't physically remove them, but we have a record that we told them that. These are the quick, and I don't wanna read them all to you. Fundamentals of Code Enforcement is, is our level one. It just is, is just that. It talks about ethics. I just wanna point that out. It has a big part in, in the, in the class about ethics, how we are supposed to conduct ourselves, and, and I think that's very important. It's, to me, very important, and it's important to the city. Administrative aspect is a little bit of, it's geared towards managers, but there is some, there, there is benefit for a code enforcement officer too because it talks about public speaking. We do have to speak publicly as code enforcement officers. Talks about time management, stress management, and record manage, records management. So there's a benefit for the, even for people who are not in a managerial position. Legal issues is a deep dive into the, Mr. Rudisil would like that probably. It's a deep, deep dive into the legality of code enforcement, testifying, evidence collection. It's, it has a mock trial and a mock code enforcement board hearing. It, it's, 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 it's a very detailed course. I have to go back. I'm sorry. Officer Safety is one of the two that we require. We require fundamentals and Officer Safety within eighteen months of employment, if possible, of course, and if, and the classes are offered. Officer Safety is a class that deals with situational awareness in the field. It's, it's a new, fairly new. It has come up. People are sometimes very hostile, and it deals with diversity and, and self-defense to protect the employee. It deals with meth labs and how to identify dangers to the code enforcement officers because unfortunately, every year, somewhere in America, a code enforcement officer gets hurt or even killed. It happens, unfortunately, and I think it'll get worse. It has happened in Florida even. You had those, those situations. They get killed in the job. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I hope you, I didn't talk.
I'll, I'll start out, if it's all right with you, Mr. Wilker, or Mr. Reese. You mentioned something about record keeping. That is probably one of the most important things that you do. So when you see some information out there that states things that you've pretty much got all the backup to say what you've done and how you've done it over the years, would that be a correct statement?
Yes, but it, it, yes, we, we pride ourselves in record keeping, but please keep in mind, we only keep records by law. If the case did not go to the special magistrate, after two years after the last action, the record will be destroyed. If the case went to the special magistrate, five years after the last action, the record will be destroyed. So if, by law, it's a, you know, it's the, the schedule for. So if you come in and you want a record from two thousand and two, it's, that record is most likely, unless it's still an open case, it's most likely gone.
Well, but I'm, I'm speaking more to open.
But the rest of them, yes, we have. We keep, we, we keep a dual system still. I hope the new system will, our new Excel system will allow us not to do that anymore. We keep a paper copy still, like old school, and we attach records to the MUNIS record as an attachment, as a backup, or one, one is the backup of the other.
But any active cases, documentation would still be there showing item by item what's been done and offered and helped or, or punitive starting?
Yes, and, and it has sometimes my notes on, and if there, if there's a, you know, if there's a need to, or code enforcement officers' notes or something.
All right, thank you. Comments? Yeah, Ms. Coker?
Yeah, just a couple of things. The one map that you showed up that was, it really, it was all on.
With the dots on?
I just was wondering, is that just like a stepped-up enforcement? Because obviously Ward One, the west, not that one, but I do have, where is that map? Is that something I can access? Is it just on the, on the website?
It's on the website with a link.
Okay.
Either it, it, I can send you the link. I send you the link. I send everybody the link every month that Craig creates, but we also have it on the website. Oh, Jeannie, we have it on the website, so you can access it to the website too. It's by month. So this is a three. This means it's, it's, so there should be three. I don't, two isn't on there yet. Four will be on there next month, so probably next week.
Okay, and then the one before this that was show, is that all stepped up? Look at number eight, that one.
This is.
Is that stepped up?
Yes.
Inspections? Because we're not being totally left out of, well, that stops right downtown.
I think you already had yours.
No. Yes and no. This is for the three code enforcement officers who are working in those areas. Mike has taken up, has taken it on himself. He started in Cordova Lakes, but he is.
Oh, okay, so they, okay.
Yeah, he is, but, but he is not, he is doing it as he can because he does a lot of other things, but he is doing it in Cordova Lakes. He started in Cordova Lakes. I just didn't put it on here, or we didn't put it on here because it's not quite as official, you know, but he, he's doing it in Cordova Lakes, and you will, should see, I don't know if it's on the March one already. You can see on the March one right here, and I, I'm sorry, I, I'm looking for the view. Anyways, if, if you look in this area, Councilwoman.
I see that, yeah.
This is Mike. So he was in March in that area.
So the green would be open, the red would be closed?
Yes.
So that means if they'd had something, they fixed it.
Okay, that, that, those were my two questions about those maps. And then I did wanna thank you because I know it's somewhat of a thankless job, and, and I feel like it's important, and that, there was some recent, you know, information out there that made it look a little draconian, but I think that maybe there was more information that needed to be shared, made public about your efforts to try and do this. And, and we, we tasked you to step up the efforts on this thing and send the message that if you're gonna be an absentee landlord, this isn't the place to do it. And if you haven't been to your property in nine years or taken care of it, it's not, it's not your fault.
Mr. Perry has to, he made that very clear to us.
So I just wanted to thank you and your, your, your staff and all your efforts. I know you probably do have to take a lot of the negative.
Mr. Perry?
First, I wanna thank Mr. Rice for coming down, Robin for putting the presentation together. I thought it was important for council to look at the activity that's been occurring, at least for the last couple of years since I've been here. It's, you know, you can use technology. The map is an information guide. They put that together. We have folks within the city that have great skills to, to do that type of map. It brings you real-time information so you can look back over time to see where the code violations were, which ones are closed, heavier areas, and, and also we're gonna try to even make that more robust with the types of violations and some of the key data points that Voca was pointing out, the types of violations themselves. I've often heard, you know, we should go after the low-hanging fruit first, and, and I agree with it, the things that are probably more obtrusive and, and, and more serious types of violations and the like, and we're putting together strategies to do that. Code enforcement's an interesting phenomenon. It, it's like the police. You like to see them around, but you hate to see them behind you. And, and, and that's the way it works, and, and we've looked at some things that are, that are very simplistic. I think that when there's neighborhoods and they say, where is the code enforcement? The neighbors that are keeping up their property and the like, where's the city's code enforcement? Because we have, you know, hopefully just a, a small, small number of, of violators, and it just doesn't seem like they're, they're getting enforced against, and there they are picking on the overgrown grass by a couple of blades, you know, inches in, in grass grade and the like. And so there's always that type of criticism and observation and, and kind of feelings by the community themselves. We're trying to bring some cohesiveness to that, to again, attack those more serious violations first. But, but also, I think it's important to demonstrate a presence, an active presence, because what that does, it says that you are active in an area and that you are trying to bring the community up to community standards for property ownership. And you shouldn't have a property there since two thousand and fourteen that you decided to go to another state and leave, and, and, and all of this happening and the like. And the one that was in the newspaper was, you know, obviously the ones that stick out, it, it starts as a exterior building violation. But I can tell you that a lot of the ones that go to foreclosure are people that have had concrete shells that have been destroyed, crushed-in houses that have been sitting there for years, roofs that have deteriorated and half-open with tarps. All types of bad things are surrounding the property, on the, on the property and the like. And when there's that type of repetitive neglect, I think it's incumbent on the city to deal with that type of blight. They're unsafe buildings, they're diminution to the community, both in terms of the property value, but more probably importantly in terms of what is your neighborhood about? And what is the city doing to, you know, expect it? Because if you allow it to continue, well, you're allowing it to continue, and I think that's kinda the message you're sending. And, and over time, that gets worse and worse. If you have a five, six, ten-year period of doing that, don't be surprised when you drive down the street and, you know, two out of the ten houses look like in bad shape and the like, or more than that. And it's a hardship to turn around. That's the problem. So we're trying to turn it around. It's not gonna be turned around overnight, but as we look at the property values, the, the enhancements and improvements that are being made to some of these areas that haven't been improved for years in different sections of the city, whether it's the east side or down in the, in the, along Twenty-sixth Street and the east-to-west corridor surrounding there, I see a lot of reinvestment going into those areas, and I think we should be proud about that. Probably the increase in property values have done that and a whole host of other opportunities, but we need to take advantage of it and do our part too. And some of it, sometimes a little bit uncomfortable. Like I said, the police car in back of you, you get the citation because you ran the stop sign or whatever it is, but at the same time, it brings about betterment of the community overall. So that's what we're trying to do a little bit about, and it, it's gonna take a little bit of time. I, I, I think as it gets down to managing this, I wanna close with this. I have fallen short because I allowed this to happen for two years. I put it, should've jumped on it day one, and, and I did recognize and talk with and start to learn a little bit about our code enforcement. Heck, I think the first couple of months I was here, I went out and did a ride-along with Mike Magnus and the like, and went to a bunch of these calls and, and that kinda thing and everything. But I'll tell you what, what I've learned is that there is a certain degree of passive management that has permeated, that I need to improve, and I'm gonna talk about that later, but this is a really good section of where that happened, a good example of it. We need to know what we're, and you all need to know, and I need to know as a senior executive administrator, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna do it? When are you gonna do it? And who's gonna do it? And it ought to get done. I'm not going on those ride-alongs. I am not going down every Monday morning like I'm doing now. I delegate that, and I delegate it to people that are direct reports to me, and then I direct it down the line for delegation of management responsibilities. And I'm gonna continue to send that message to each and every department within the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I just think it's important to know when we're talking about code enforcement and in particular, properties that are, that have code enforcement liens recorded against them and, and where they're actually being foreclosed upon, I think the city council is likely largely aware, but the public may not be, of the process that, that a property owner has to go through in order to get to that point, starting from the initial notice that they receive, that they give them time to come into compliance with that initial warning notice. If, if they don't come into compliance within that timeframe, and typically, they're ignoring code enforcement at that point, because if they do reach out to code enforcement, code enforcement's gonna work with them. They ignore code enforcement, they'll be set for a hearing at that point in front of the magistrate to make a determination as to whether or not they are in compliance with the code or not. If they are in violation, the magistrate again provides time for the property owner to come into compliance. And keep in mind, there are statutory. And keep in mind, there are statutory, statutory notice requirements at every stage of this process where the property owner is, is getting noticed. Then there is a, another hearing if they, if they still are not in compliance. And it is only at that point that fines begin to run on the property. And so when, when you talk about a, a property that has, that has thousands of dollars in fines built up and, and a lien recorded against the property, that is the result in most cases of years of completely ignoring notices and hearings before the city. So I just think it's important.
And Mr. Ruzel, I could just interject and maybe it's the lawyer in process in me, but does a property owner have to register with a government agency as where they're to receive legal notices such as the assessor's office?
Right.
Because we don't know if somebody leaves to San Antonio or Boston or anything else and leaves their house vacant or allows somebody to do it. But the property owner, they, they have responsibility for owning property, isn't that right?
So under the, under the statutory notice requirements, the notice goes to the address that they receive their tax bill at. So presumably they are, if they are receiving and paying their property taxes, the code enforcement notice is going to the same address.
And there's a presumption in the law that, that if it's put into the mail at that address, that the, the individuals receive the notice. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Am I being cross examined?
No, I'm just trying to establish a couple of facts because it's a common situation that I didn't receive notice.
Right.
I can't tell you how many times I've heard that down at the magistrate's hearing in the administrative process. And okay, we're, you know, what's your new address? Are you going to change it with the property appraiser's office and the like? And, you know, there's a lot of different things that, that come into play with the process. But, but that particular fact is that, you know, with owning property, with rights come responsibilities.
Yes, Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rice, you had spoken about the changes in the state law that were dealing with reporting of these things. Can you speak to that a little bit? Because at one point in time, people were allowed to call in and make anonymous complaints. But there was a situation on the other side of the state where someone kind of took advantage of that situation and then the state got involved. So can you, can you speak to what is required now?
Now, the requirements, and I think it's since 2021, is anybody who calls in a complaint has to give his or her name and address. We will ask that and, we will ask that and we will record it in the public record as, and we will have to disclose that if somebody just wants it. It also includes you. If I, if Ms. Barnaby comes to me and says, property such and such and such is in, I want you to go by there. I will put in elected officials as a source and I would put in Councilwoman Barnaby. I won't put your address in there because your address is here as, you know, as, as a, so we have a, a record of that. The only exception to that, that we as a city, that we as a policy, the, the law says that it's, if it's an immediate threat to public safety, public health and public welfare. So we do as a policy accept anonymous complaints for work without permit. If somebody calls in and says they're putting a roof on here or they're remodeling a property, we will respond to that even without a name. Because work that has been done without the benefit of permits is per se a threat to public safety, safety and welfare. Because we cannot ensure that it was done properly. But other than that, yes, we do require that. But we do not research your address. If you give us an address, we don't have the capability to research you. I mean, we, if you say my name is such and such, we, we record that and oftentimes you're already in the system because you're a resident of the city. So that's, but we record that.
Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, I noticed your numbers for electeds in 2022 is 17. I think I have that many for you already this year, as you well know. A couple of things. I'm very happy to hear your relationship with the CRA is strong and getting stronger. The whole idea of the activity of CRA and code enforcement in those neighborhoods is for the improvement of quality of life for all the residents of those neighborhoods. So I really appreciate that. One question, I guess more administratively, for the employees who go get certifications. Are there any type of pay incentives for, for that? Can you explain that?
Yes. Each level generates a 50 cents an hour increase for the employees.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore.
I was just going to highlight both the process that Mr. Ruzel and Mr. Perry spoke to as well as I'm, I'm happy to see that Mr. Kramer pointed out the ongoing development of a closer relationship with the CRA. And I know Mr. Reese and I have talked about this before, but I find it note, well, first let me just say that I previously served as a special magistrate for code enforcement hearings for another municipality. And what I found in that experience is true here as well, which is that the goal is always compliance. The goal is not punitive. It is a process, but I find that staff is working with people as much as they possibly can to get there. And I think it's notable that they have to have a new level of education regarding their own personal safety while they're out there doing the job. A job that, like Ms. Coker pointed out, can be thankless, but, but needs to be done. And to that point, I say thank you for what you're doing. And I also echo Mr. Kramer's sentiment that I may be a surprise as part of this new job that how many times, nine times out of 10, if someone is contacting me, it is because they're trying to register a complaint or they have an ongoing issue in their neighborhood. So the department is trying to be responsive to the citizenry, citizenry, which I always appreciate. So again, thank you.
Ms. Coachman.
Lots of things I want to say, but first of all, thank you. The way things are going now in the last couple of years, I see no reason to feel like Bradenton will continue looking the way it does in certain areas. The idea, I don't know where my voice is going. We're middle schoolers too much. The idea of the CRA and the city working together is essential to make this happen. The CRA has certain programs, what is it? Unchain My Fence and so many other things in play that can be used to help individuals become compliant. And the fact that both, both are talking to each other now is, is again, essential. I like the approach. It doesn't seem punitive. I became aware, you know, that when someone's case goes to the magistrate, special magistrate, it's been a while, you know? So if we unfortunately are suing someone or, you know, someone's in some serious legal trouble, unfortunately, the timeline is probably pretty extensive. But back to educating, the fact that our approach now is to educate and help someone along the process is, is very important because there are some areas of the city we just pretty much ignored. And it got to the point that the citizens, even if they did make a complaint, and this is years back, not, not in the last couple of years. If they did make a complaint, eh, may or may not have gotten addressed. But now I think citizens are beginning to see that if they say something, something will be done. And I, I applaud you that you are getting this all together the way you are and trying to make the friendly city of beautiful cities.
Thank you. And I know, Mr. Reese and I have talked a lot over the years on the council and as mayor. But it was one thing that stuck out with me years ago was as we're talking about things, you know, you, you said that we are not the Gestapo. Now, that may be from where you come from. And, and it's about compliance, not punishment. And one of the things that I think the citizens have to really realize is if, when you look at some of these things and maybe when it gets more media attention, oh, why is the city doing that to somebody? But what you got to put yourself in as an average citizen, what if that house was next to me? You know, how would I feel? Whether it's a burned out house that a bank owns, that nobody cares about and it sits for years and it's, it's dangerous. There's things that, that, you know, need to be done. And, and why is the city taking five years to do anything about it when we can't find the, the bank owner in California because of the foreclosure and we can't do things? But when you live next to that, that is your everyday. And, and there's other areas. So over all the years, for me, it was always important not to punish, but to try to figure out how we can make it better and give them an opportunity. So, you know, as we've heard, I think this council is very unified on making sure that we continue to do that while being the friendly city with a heart. And so, but there is those times that we are going to have to say, okay, you know, if you're up to the $75,000 that we capped it at, because when you came to us years ago, there was fines that were well over that. So again, it wasn't about punishment, but it was about getting people's attention that weren't doing the right things. And I think we've got that now. And I see that we're working even better now to help people. But if we, if you don't accept the help, there is the punishment. So appreciate the presentation, appreciate Mr. Perry, you know, as the direction we've given him to do a lot in his almost two years being here, coming up in July. So we'll keep that forward and we appreciate the presentation. Ms. Singer, did you have anything that you wanted? Okay, thank you. All right, moving forward, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the next matter on a new business is for the letter of intent, is that correct?
Yes.
Mayor, I previously received authority to, based on a motion, to begin discussions with the ownership of 1111 Third Avenue West as relates to potential purchase of that building and.
Can you pull your microphone down?
I apologize. Sure. And we're at a position now basically where we want to, we've, we've had H.J. Hyde do the initial review of that particular structure and assessment as it relates to the suitability as well as an estimated improvement cost. Those numbers are still subject to change a little bit. And we are working along with H.J. Hyde to further do assessment of the cost of remodeling that building. What we're looking at basically is a complete gut. It's a concrete block building, 36,000 square feet. The gut would basically include taking it back all the way to the concrete walls themselves and then rebuilding what would be programmatically needed and efficient to operate a city hall complex that would contain the existing administrative services that are contained within this particular structure as well as the city, city council functions and the like. And potentially the public works municipal, or I should say administrative functions there at the Crowley Building currently located on 9th Street. So we think that most of that can fit in there. So the, the numbers basically are roughly $10 million for that type of improvement. However, like any remodel, you really don't know until you get in there deeper. And in order to do that, we need to get with our architects and engineers at this stage along with our, our pre-construction services who build buildings and have already done that initial cost estimate and the like. In order to get those two together to do a further deeper dive, basically, we, we're going to need to show some good faith and seriousness about the potential to purchase this building. The letter of intent would begin to negotiate a price and it would be entirely subject to city council approval. It would come back. You and I had talked about this matter and I would also suggest that when we do look at city hall options as it relates to location, that we do a workshop prior to any vote and we kind of do a deeper dive on it. One thing I am worried about is we are with limited options and, and I'd like to try to express our seriousness of the intent to potentially purchase the building. If we can check all the boxes, if it makes financial sense, if it makes a, a city sense as its location and, and the way it could serve the public and serve what we need internally as an organization and the like, I'd hate to lose that opportunity. And, and, and I think to lock that opportunity up for somewhere on the 60 to 90 day timeframe is what I'm looking at. I don't want to get into the price right now because if I do, I think that could, could increase the price and other, other issues that I could talk about further. But that's where we're, where, where we are, where we are at. And I think it's important to give you enough information, explain where we're at, what we've done thus far and what we need to do to continue a meaningful thorough assessment in order to bring it and posture it appropriately before council policymakers to make decisions between various options.
Questions? Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Perry, in the, the cover letter, it states that it is a non-binding letter of intent.
That's correct.
And I don't believe I heard you, if you said it, I missed it.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to.
It would be subject to council approval and the words "non-binding" would be in the agreement.
Any other questions? Ms. Moore?
It's not really a question, it's more of a comment that Mr. Perry and I spent some time talking about it. It is non-binding, so I'm, I feel comfortable that we're not getting ahead, what do, what do we say?
Out of our skis.
Yes.
In front of our skis.
In front of our skis, that's it.
We have a lot of snow skiing here.
Perhaps the cart, perhaps the cart before the horse might be something.
So I feel comfortable with that aspect. My, you know, the push and pull, I think, that all of us struggle with is spending money to figure out whether we're going to spend the money. But at this point, I think that I feel comfortable that Mr. Perry and staff are, are pursuing due diligence in this regard as well as the other two potential options. I'm happy to hear that it's going to be a workshop so that we can have more in-depth conversation and try to narrow down where we're going since that's such a, potentially such a big part of the question.
Are you making the motion?
I suppose I could make the motion. I move to authorize the city administrator to execute the non-binding letter of intent for a term of 30 days for the building located at 1111 Third Avenue West.
Is that the 30 days, Mr. Perry, or the, the 30 to 90?
Yeah, I would say up to.
Up to 90 days. But we can cut it off if we, I, I plan on having a workshop quick, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's what we need to do because I don't want to spend any money if we don't have to.
And we, we've spoken, Mr. McClellan and I, with some folks, and we thought that the 90 days would be enough. I believe that's what H.J. Hyde advised us to get with our architects and engineers and do the necessary further diligence.
Yeah, up to 90 days.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Up to.
Is that a?
And that, and that doesn't mean that they would give me 90 days. It's, it's just that's, that's where I'm starting. Yep.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Coachman. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
A couple of other matters. I think I'll go to the dais.
Stand still by the microphone.
Good luck.
I, I just wanted to report a little bit on where we're at with staff evaluations. And so we've conducted evaluations of, of.
You're jumping ahead a little bit.
Am I jumping?
You're on C, which engagement letter with.
Thanks.
Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson.
Great, great. Yep. I bought down the wrong agenda and my iPad isn't working, so I wasn't sure exactly which ones were. On this particular issue, it's to approve engagement with Neighbors Gilpin, Nickerson. And the reason why is that this particular firm had represented the city in, for quite some time as it relates to some of their development work. They had represented the city in the city garage and as well as previous types of debt issuance and some of the development work we've done. I don't know what specific projects prior to that and I don't want to kind of say that I do. But they're out of Tallahassee. They have expertise and a great deal of expertise with the types of, of, of development that this particular transaction as it relates to the disposition of city hall involves. I want to get a couple of things if Elmo's ready to go. Is that ready to go, Tamara? Tamara?
Initially, I had contemplated basically using a conflict counsel, Dagnall, as the, the legal consultant and providing representation of the city for this agreement as it relates to the, the D-MDA, which is the disposition and development, master development agreement. And they had prepared a draft copy of one of those master development agreements for me, but I didn't think it really expressed to me the, 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 the depth and complexity of what's involved with this particular project. And the more I looked at the legal structure and the complexity and depth and surrounding issues, the more I thought it was important to try to find folks with experience with this type of, of project. And I'm gonna show you a couple of things basically that spell out, I think, the complexity of this project. So this is a schedule of performance, and really what it contemplates, that's fairly important, is a critical path of, of kinda bringing about the development of the master development agreement. So at the top, it says, you know, this schedule of performance, this is exhibit B to a master development agreement. I actually got online, did a bunch of legal research, looked at what other governments that had done kind of quaze I similar types of projects that talked about private developers doing mixed use or special use along with city property. And that's a specialty type of thing. We're not just selling this property saying, the property's sold, do what you want with it. We're selling the property with very specific requirements on what we want for the use, what we want for the guarantees of completion, what we want for adjacencies in the surrounding area as it relates to green space, parking, off-site infrastructure and the like. And when you start thinking about that, it's a fairly complex type of legal framework that you're working within. And so this particular scheduled performance, it was attached to one of the MDAs that I found that was out of California, city in California. And I thought that it was structured pretty well, because it sets forth a critical path that it hit a lot of the comments that, that council had been relaying to me, and really the community had been relaying to us as we listened to them. And if you look at it, you know, under section one, well, before I get to that, the, the explanatory stuff, it summarizes the schedule of various activities. It's meant to be descriptive and an aid in relating to the schedule of performance. And so the first thing we wanna look at under section one is submission of source and uses. The developer shall, shall submit a summary of sources and use tables for the development to include financing plans, narrative summaries of sources, use tables, and readjusted interest rates. One of the reasons why we wanna look at that is we look at this as one building, and last night, as I'm sitting there kinda trying to figure things out at my desk at home, I said, you know, this really isn't just one project, it's a multitude of projects. There's, there's a three-hundred-and-fifty unit apartment complex that's built on the backside of it. There's walkways that people want, there's parking, it's up to seven-hundred space as a complex, some of it's public, some of it's for the residents. There's a hotel, a streetscape that's associated with it, a green space, a condo, there's lower levels, as Mr. Allen had pointed out, and Mr. Allen did a good thing for us, and Jim Zorbal from LNL, they said, look, we don't wanna be talked at or talked to you, we wanna talk with you. And, and that's really important, because each one of these elements has to be done right to have a world-class project. And it has to be functional, it has to be a good business deal, and it has to look good, so that when people come down here and people write about it, they say, pretty good job. And, and that's, you know, what, four or five years down the road. This framework starts to do that, because you're gonna have not one building permit. They're not gonna go down to Robin's Shop and, hey, can I get a, you know, can I get one building permit? Each one of these is gonna be probably permitted separately. And so you got the technical aspects of that, but conceptually, I think they have to be thought about separately as well. I had asked you all to provide us with some images and photographs and graphics of what the Bradenton look is, and I appreciate the discussions we have and those folks that have submitted some of those. I got online last night and, and I queued in under Google. It was downtown or urban development, mixed use projects. I didn't put downtown Nashville. Couple of photos showed really cool Nashville or other cities, and it specifically said. And what I found when I queued in there was some pretty nice-looking things that might fit, so I thought, I am going to bring them to council and say, which ones do you like? Because what I received was a fairly diverse cross-section, and that's good, I mean, that's where you wanna start, is with a nice wide swath and kinda hone it down. But your, your hotel might look different than the other corner at the Bishop. That might look different from the reverse corner that's on the west side up, up by our retail shops and the parking garage. That might look different than what connects the Riverwalk. But it all has to fit together to be a world-class project. Well, it's a business deal too, so we have to look at the finances under section one. Look at how they intend to structure the financing, because when I talked with Mark on this, he said, there's two, two things you gotta be, that are fairly important. One is to get it conceptually right, that what they're bringing, and then is to guarantee that when they start, they finish. But there's two parts. There's one to get it to the starting line, and then there's another one where the guarantees, the assurances, the performance bonds kick in, and no one's gonna guarantee it until that point is when they start the construction and the bank letters of credit and financing and things like that are in, in place. We just wanna know in phase one, what are you generally thinking about? So that you get some information on that and some assurances and go, yeah, that makes sense. Number two, conceptual site plans and elevations. And so what we would like there is a design site plan and elevations for what it looks like. That makes sense, it's one of the things why I was asking you for architectural standards and the like, so that as Jim Zorbal from LNL said, I can't tell you about heights and other aspects until I know what the building's supposed to look like. And that kinda makes sense, I didn't think about that at first, but, but it kinda does control it. And if you look at some of those things that I saw last night, you can, you can see why. I mean, some of them had cantelevers over a, over an open-air deck on the bottom, and then a deck that sits on the cantelever on the top, and then a third deck, I mean, really nice-looking stuff. And, and it's expensive stuff, and, and, you know, I don't know where that is in their, their wheelhouse and how it affects us, but that's what we're gonna end up talking about at some point in this discussion. Number three, application for all, or applicable government approvals. We need to look at, okay, what government approvals are gonna be necessary for this project? We got right-of-way, really close, we got county right-of-way, we may have other types of obviously swift mud, applications for stormwater, we're right on the river, NEPA, Environmental Protection Act, we, we have to look at that and talk with our developers and give us all some ideas about that. The reason why I'm going through this is that master development agreement that was initially given to me had none of this. And it's complex. And then we go through to submission of construction plans where they submit both initial construction plans, you know, I don't know if that's gonna be thirty percent or where that's at, and architectural, build outs, that type of stuff. Obviously submission of, of more final financing plans thereafter, city's review of those financing plans, a submission of loan financing and commitments for the financing. How do you, what is your intent to assure that this project is going to be approved for financing? And is that six different pieces? Are you gonna have an LLC that owns the apartments, a hotel management company that owns the hotel and, and the property, another one that owns the open space, you know, whatever it might be? The construction contract itself, we wanna see how they're building it, how they're using subs, and what their structures are there. Bonds, as I talked about, government approvals, you know, it goes through that, that very lengthy period of, of critical path is what it really is. And then, you know, as it gets to sixteen and seventeen, you know, obviously submission of proofs of insurances so that we ensure that's all done, completion of closing conditions all the way through, you know, certificates of occupancy at item number twenty-five. That's a pretty lengthy critical path. This is not gonna be an easy project. There, there's nothing easy about any of that. And as it relates to master development agreement that we just started to draft, that I looked at as an exemplar, you can see how you reduce some of that critical path to, to legal terms of, that critical path I was talking about is in the legal world called gratuitous. There, there's no legal obligations for them to do it, it's just how we would do it. When you get to the MDA that's signed, oh no, that, that's, that's obligatory, that says what your duties and responsibilities and obligations are under the law. And so as you see these sections, I just put the sections that I thought were applicable from the exemplar that I had, which is basically, you know, obviously first section definitions and exhibits, so we have all that stuff that you can look at that's attached, important, related there too. The predisposition requirements, meaning that before we even sell it, you're gonna have to check the boxes that A was done, B was done, C was done, you know, through Z was done. Then the transaction as it relates to disposition of the property, what's legally required to transfer the property, how that's done, and then obviously the construction requirements after the closing that take place, and then ongoing developer obligations, and then obviously their ability to do assignments and transfers, so if you need to have cover contractors come in or cover financiers, or assignments that are related to because of default of one party or non-performance of one party or the other, that's all has to be addressed. And, and, and obviously recourse and remedies and then general provisions. So the reason why I went through that whole thing is just to give you a little snapshot of where we're going and why it's really important to get some lawyers with experience of that. And that's what this is about.
Questions? I know all, all the briefings, I'm sure he went over a lot of detail with you.
I did.
So that, that's, that's what I'm proud of this council, that they're willing to, to take the time, once the agenda comes out, and spend it with you, 'cause I know some are, you know.
Each and every one of these councils, I wanna say, I met with, and, and, you know, I know some organizations, meetings get canceled, and it will with us too, but tirelessly both our staff and, and our council have each and every time met with me beforehand and on this particular things, that people don't see the sausage getting made, but that's what we make a lot.
It's there, so we bring it publicly out this way.
Right.
And one thing that I know, just so the council knows also, that Mr. Perry and I have talked about other opportunities to meet in your wards, about your wards of what's going on with maybe the, the department that's doing it with the project manager, so we can keep up more on individual projects ward-wide. So, you know, I mean, so that's something that, that we're, you know, with this, with the cohesiveness of this council to work that forward is important to me as well as Mr. Perry to continue that. So if there's no questions, there, Mr. Kramer?
There are only questions and comment. I received some calls basically since our special meeting with people saying, oh, you've gone ahead and you've already decided. And I tried to tell them, no, we have not decided, we're gonna go ahead and sell, just that this is a prime example of the process that no matter what we're gonna do, we have to go through prior to any final decision we make. So I'm glad you were able to hear, be here and explain a lot of that.
Yeah, it's hard to put this in the newspaper. It really is, and, and it's, it's complicated stuff, for sure.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm contrasting and comparing this with when the council back in nineteen ninety-eight voted to work with a developer to do the work on what was then called the sand pile. This has been a much more informative and sophisticated approach, and I really appreciate that.
On Two-Eighth Street, I think.
Nope, it's important.
Council's been engaged, no doubt.
You want a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute the engagement letter with Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Moore, and Ms. Moore, you had a question?
It wasn't a question, it was also a comment. I have, I appreciate that many times my posture has seemed like maybe I was delaying or hesitant, but however, engaging in a turn, a, a law firm that has this kind of experience, really I find very reassuring, because my asks are complicated, and I am excited to know that we're gonna have someone who is going to represent us that will be very knowledgeable and be able to really get to the level of detail that I know I would feel comfortable with.
Well, Ms. Moore, I'm gonna disagree with you on you saying that it seems like you're trying to do things. We, we as a group now are engaged in conversation, and I think it's very important instead of propaganda. And conversation is very important to have, because what we don't know until we have conversation, then we know and we see how we can move forward. So I appreciate your, and obviously coming in new, 'cause that's ten years ago I did, and you listen and you don't know. What you don't know, you till you know it. And, you know, we have a lot of new council people, and maybe one, if I say it the right way, redheaded.
Whoa.
You didn't start off very good.
I'm sitting down.
Yeah, sit down. But anyway, so discussion has been had. Is there any further discussion before we go to move forward? All right, hearing none, we'll start the vote to approve the engagement letter with Ward five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carrie's unanimously, thank you. Mr. Perry, now on personnel actions.
So I was addressing the issue regarding performance evaluations, and of course, based on our policy, annual performance evaluations are done, and I talked with some directors that said, yeah, we, we've done them before, but, and I got the forms from Nilsa, and they were, they were pretty basic types of evaluation. I tried to put together a team and get more meaningful types of evaluation that were more specific to senior management-type leaders as it relates to various types of management style, financial skills, interaction with council, the community, presentation, analytics, I mean, across the board. And they were, they were, I thought, pretty good, and we put together a scoring matrix. The good news is that, and I, I think you'd all agree, and, and I wanna thank each and every director that I work with and their staff and our administrative staff, they give a hundred percent, there, there's no doubt. And it's, it's like I was told, you know, there's certain places you go, you don't get there and get to come in unless you're capable. And the scoring kinda reflected that. Most all of the scoring was at a very high level of performance. The, the, the crazy exceptional type of things was far and few in between, because I try to keep a fairly tight range, and if I was to put numerical numbers on it, I'd say probably, I don't know, eighty, eighty-five to eighty-eight percent is where probably ninety percent of them fell. And, and everything else was pretty close to that too. But you heard a little bit when I talked about code enforcement, about getting details on what we're doing, how we're doing it, when we're doing it, and who's doing it. I don't like loosey-goosey management, and it takes time to develop that. Management of this organization and what we're trying to do here is every bit as complex as what you just saw in this project. It's not simple stuff. You can have experience and come to work every day and work nine or ten hours a day and still not get it done if everybody isn't on the same page of hitting certain common tenants and high performance. And sometimes in my business, what I told every manager recently is that it's hard to evaluate performance, and you shouldn't evaluate it yourself. Some people, including myself, think, well, I, maybe I'm doing a good job, but I ask other people, say, well, you're doing a good job for, you know, these particular categories, but you need some room improvements, and there are important improvement areas here. And some people are very responsive to that, and some people go, I don't know what they're talking about. Good across the board and everything, and I guess that's my job as a, as a senior executive level manager, and I think it's the director's job, and it's the people that work for me's job to do that. A lot of folks don't like to manage other people and the dynamics of that. And really, if you look at professional sports or high-level management, you've gotta do that. In a publicly-held company, you don't hit certain metrics and do what you're supposed to do and get certain results, there's someone else that'll come in and do that, because it has to be. And I had that kinda conversation with some of my folks, and I'm gonna continue to have that conversation. I thought that was important to bring to your attention, and I'll leave it at that. I think, again, that everybody gives, you know, a great, great effort, and, and, and they're valuable and constructive contributions. But at the end of the day, there's certain categories that we have to get done, whether it's in the administratist office, the finance. it's in the administratist office, the finance department, public works, fire department, planning. I just can't have things that I have to go down and do other people's jobs because I'm too busy dealing with lawyers and complex things like that. And dealing with community that I go out and try to get money for the city that we've had a lot of success with. I mean, everybody has a certain hourglass and there's only so much sand in it, right? And so I've gotta have that kind of expectation of, I think, Coachman told me the best it was, and high level performance is extraordinarily high level, or something like that.
Highly effective versus.
Thank you. Yeah. Yep. Exactly. And, and I think that, that describes it. That's what I need. And if I have to make changes, I'll make changes. And I just think it's publicly important to send that message to, to you guys. That, that's kinda where I'm at, my management style with this organization now, almost two years in. And there has been great responsiveness. There really has. And I can give you examples at every one of these departments. So, that's all good. But it has to keep, keep going. We've gotta get things done. I give these guys laundry lists once I go down there Monday morning. And we have now posted it on the boards in their, in their conference rooms. And the best thing is, it's kinda like joining the military or a team that you get your butt chewed and you kicked down about if, if you wanna win these, these challenges, you basically, we gotta perform as a team. We gotta perform at a higher level. So they tear it down a little bit and then they build it up. And that's what kinda, the tearing down part isn't fun. It really isn't. But I'll tell you what, I've seen, I've seen some pretty good building up. When I look over at that list of public works, a lot of that stuff's getting done. You, yeah, there's still a lot, a lot of stuff to do. But when you've got fifteen, twenty items of, of medium level complexity, along with the water keepers and a whole host of high level complexity and engineering and the like. And you gotta basically manage down here, you gotta manage in the middle, you gotta manage up top. That's not easy stuff. So, I appreciate your indulgence. I appreciate the effort and the commitment by staff. And I'll close it with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, Madam Clerk, any unfinished business?
No, sir.
All right. We're gonna go to council reports. And I always go last. But today, I'm gonna kinda start out first because of something I wanna say. Yes, ma'am. Oh, did you have something?
Just a point of order. On the cover page that we see for this, there is a suggested motion. And I didn't know if you wanted to, if, if that has changed or if.
I didn't think there was.
I, I don't think I need a motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I didn't think there was.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, I appreciate bringing that to my attention.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
The rubric that you used or?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we see that?
Absolutely. And I was gonna get you a range of where the, the scoring was too. Absolutely.
Right, perfect. All right. But just, and I'm just gonna say this first and I'll go at the end. But I just wanted to, to obviously send along condolences to Sergeant Lee Cousins' family. Sergeant Cousins worked with us for many, many years before coming from the military as a military police. And unfortunately, he, we thought he had beat his cancer a little bit. And then it came back not too long ago and it was a quick battle. Obviously talking with his wife. And he has two young daughters, who one of them actually had a birthday last Friday. So, you know, in the seven and nine-year-old range. And, you know, when you think about, obviously, all the things that, that he went through trying. And, and I told Amy, that, you know, he was one of our union reps. And for the, for the union. But Lee was always the one that would come in and sit with me and talk with me and, and try to work for the betterment of the officers. Not just a few. And he wanted it from the bottom to the top to be better. So I always respected that and, and was, was saddened when his cancer came back and, and he lost his battle. And just wanted to, to our community to know that, you know, great person, great father, family man, and obviously a great officer for the city of Bradenton. So, just to send along our condolences to his family and that. And, you know, they've got a long time ahead to be without a dad. But with two little girls and a wife and other family members, just know that we're thinking of them. So, and the funeral will be Friday at the church. And that's gonna be tough for, for a lot of people in our department and a lot of people around this town. So, just thank his family for allowing him to be with us for those many years he was here. So, thank you. And we'll move on to start in Ward Two.
Oh, thank you.
Follow that.
It, it was my honor to be able to serve as a judge with the Golden Herald Awards that were given out this year to graduating seniors. The very first time I did that, I walked to my car thinking, I gotta step up my game. These kids are amazing. And I have felt that way every time that I've had the opportunity to participate with this program. So to the young people that I got to meet, I wish them the very best. And all of them that I spoke with said they wanted to come back to Manatee County when they finished their education. And that gave me great hope as well. I also participated with the Bradenton Women's Club. They had a fundraising fashion show recently. And that was one of the most fun events I've gone to in a long time. Eric Vaughn was the MC. He was hysterical. Because they also got him doing the catwalk with the purse auction that they held and a few other things. And he was just hysterically funny. So I wanna thank the ladies at, at the Women's Club for the work that they do. And keep an eye out because you're gonna wanna go next year. It was that much fun. I also wanna offer congratulations to our mayor for being selected and inducted into the Hall of Fame with the Boys and Girls Club of Manatee County. And was very proud to be there with you and to see that happen. And again, my family joins in with everyone here, sending condolences to the family of our, our fallen officer, Lee Cousins.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the words. I know Lee's family is, you know, they're getting through the time right now. Funerals this weekend or Friday. So, thank you for that. Couple things. A friend of mine, Jamie Sedvery-Rosnak, from the Southwest Florida YMCA. She's the Associate Executive Director. I think I got that title right. Out, and she's now out at the 59th Street location. They had a stakeholders' meeting on Monday night that I was not able to attend. But she sent a survey to me that I believe was going to be forwarded to all of you as well. That basically is just talking about what they're looking to do with their strategic plan coming up for the community, primarily in the categories of youth development, social services. So really, that's the Bradentons YMCA. The one out of Lakewood Ranch is nice, but that's the one in the city. So, I wanna support that. Also, some support for some students and past students at St. Stevens. Today is Penance Day, where they get to announce what college they're planning to attend in the fall. So that's why the Florida State tie, cause I believe there's quite a few Florida State future Seminoles there. And also to some former St. Stevens students, Chase and Sidney Brown, who are expected to be selected in the NFL Draft in the next few days. So, yeah. Kudos to them.
Thank you.
I don't have too much to report. I, I am scheduled to have pancakes with River Isles on Friday. And I am looking forward to that and having opportunity to get to know more of the members of that community and tell them a little bit in more detail about what we're, you know, working on and how things are going in City Hall. I participated with Project Reach with the Manatee Chamber over the past, I guess it was last week. I had the pleasure of volunteering in my own daughter's classroom. That was tons of fun. And I encourage anyone who's not ever had an opportunity to volunteer with that program to give it a try. You learn a lot about the mindset of fourth graders. And it's a great opportunity to encourage them as far as their future education and career goals. I, it was my turn to do Council Corner. And the tone of that was really just trying to communicate, similar to Mr. Kramer. I received a lot of questions and emails, thinking that after the special meeting, everything was decided and the picture was what was happening. And I just, again, wanted to reassure people, it's a process. We're still open for conversation and, and input from the community as always. And I believe that's it for me.
Thank you.
I also don't have a whole lot to report. Most of what I would have talked about, we really discussed it throughout the meeting. The, the idea of beautifying parts of the city that really need it and just working together. I wanna also congratulate the mayor, being a Hall of Famer. It was, it was, it was heartwarming yesterday to see the, the impact of the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, obviously, it made a mayor. But just to see that it's continuing with the youth today. I mean, the young man that was recognized, you know, he couldn't attend and, and get the accolades because he was taking a, one of the tests for college. So that, it, it was just, it was just very heartwarming to see how, you know, there's still organizations that are building our youth to be class act adults. And I just wanna say also that I deepness sincere condolences to the Cousins' family and BPD. We're all a family. And we'll, you know, pray and, and pray for strength for the family and those little girls.
Thank you.
Okay, couple things. First off, I wanna put a little shout out to the Pirates Organization. I had a couple of calls this week from people who've been given marauders tickets, school groups, and how they're giving opportunity for children to go to the baseball games that sometime, I mean, some of us take that for granted. But I, they're such a great community partner. And, and I just wanna give them a little shout out. And, and last week, I went to one of the marauders' games. And the Penguin Project is something that Kiwanis is working on, working with children and adult special needs. And I'm, the, just watching it, the, the impact that it was having is, is I think something we all need to kind of take a look at. And I'm glad Kiwanis has decided to extend it through the summer. But I sat there and there was a mother who was crying, watching her son perform. And the two, there were three siblings there who were just cheering him on. And I thought, what a ripple effect. Not just that student is having their life changed, it's changing families. And several of the kids said, hey, I've never been to a baseball game. So, I mean, just the ripple effect from some of these, just what might be considered smaller acts are really having an effect. I, I too got to participate through the chamber with Project Teach. Was a great opportunity. I was at Rogers Garden. The mayor always says how the, the youth are just 25%, but they're a hundred percent of our future. And I was, they were great kids. They really were. It was a great opportunity. I encourage everyone to, to try and participate in some way in the school system. Because I think I probably got back way more than they got. And then last and not least, my, one of my favorite times of the year, it's, we celebrate our heritage. The parade is this weekend. And so get your beat on and be safe.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I forgot to share something. Last weekend, I did participate by going to a performance at our Manatee County hysterical park, historical park. It's called The Ballard of Old Manatee. And it's the story about Sarah Lee and James Vanderreip. And having grown up here, I'd always heard the story of The Lonesome Grave. This explains how it came to be. And they did an outstanding job. If you have any interest in seeing, I would recommend, the tickets are limited. You can go to the website for the Hat Theater, which is at thehat.org.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. I meant to promote, the Penguin Project is doing Annie. Tickets are $20. Go and support them. It's wonderful. They're at the Performing Arts Center. So I would like to encourage everybody to go.
Thank you. Just the final thing for me before we go to department heads, is the DeSoto Historical Society Parade and activities that are going on this week. Figure out how to say this correctly. We do not have anything to do with canceling a parade if it rains. The city isn't involved in that part of it. But rain, you know, we're, it's expecting a lot of rain this week. So be prepared maybe to have your umbrellas because very confident, unless something is unsafe, the parade will go on. So, just if you're out there listening, we all want the parade to happen, rain or shine. So I appreciate that. And we're looking forward to a great parade. And we'll start out with Chief Bevins.
Good morning. But the good news is, I just checked and it's gone from 50% to 0% at seven o'clock. And so we'll, we'll just keep knocking on wood. And on the heels of that, a reminder to everybody that traffic and congestion is always an issue, only because we have a major road closure. So, the listening audience, please be cognizant of that and take alternate routes. And also be mindful that the content of the parade, this is a private event. It's managed by the DeSoto Group. And the city of Bradenton has nothing to do with the entries into the parade or whatnot. That's, it's a private event. Thank you for the comments surrounding Sergeant Lee Cousins. Officers and families seem to be holding up very well. There's been an incredible outpouring of support by the community, by the city. And so thank you all for that. And of course, the funeral is open to the public tomorrow, or I'm sorry, on Friday. And I know that the interment will be held at a later date. I wanna remind everybody here that we have the groundbreaking for the new gun range and the driving pad. I'm pretty sure you all got an invitation to that? From the county school board? Okay. Well, they're the ones who are gonna send that out. So I'll make sure that gets sent out to you. It's on May 4. And I know everybody's invited. They're gonna be sending the Google link so that y'all know how to get there. Don't ask me how to get there. As many times as I've been, it's, it is a little bit of a, a journey.
At the Atlantic, you've gone a little too far.
Exactly. Right.
What time is that?
It's on May 4 at nine to 10. Not to be confused with me needing to qualify as soon as the groundbreaking is over and go shoot my gun because it's, it's time for me. So as soon as we're done with that, I'm gonna go next door and then shoot my gun.
You'll want all of us out of there, I'm sure.
Yeah, right? Get, get out, please, right?
It'd be fun to have some of us see how we do.
I'll make sure they try to get that out to you today to put on your, you'll certainly want to, you'll certainly want to carpool if possible. Because, you know, it is, it is a little ways out. And, and really, we'll go more into it probably when it gets underway. And I'll talk about it and, and give you all weekly or, you know, monthly progress reports. But the really great thing about this is that it's the first time this county will have a driving pad. And, you know, driving is one of the biggest liabilities we have. And for us to finally be able to not only train our new folks, but have that as training for the, the seasoned officers is, is gonna be a great thing as well. You should have been notified about our promotion ceremony on that same date at 2:00. And so we're promoting five people. Please, and I'll make sure another email goes out about that as well. Okay. Obviously, we'll, we'll work on that. Please, if you can join us, do. I think we're gonna be moving over to the auditorium because of some of the numbers we're expecting. But that's always a, a great day in the city when we, we have some new folks stepping into a leadership role for the first time or a greater leadership role as they progress up the ranks. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you.
Can I just make a suggestion? Sometimes, cause emails get a little, invitations for the calendar are great. Cause then I could just hit accept and it goes, it puts it on. If that's possible.
Cause I don't have the May 4 either. I knew about it, but I don't.
That's the, the school board said they would take care of that.
Oh, well, yeah. I mean, in general.
Yeah.
Okay.
But obviously, I try to get you guys some, some heads, heads up. And we're running out of time for that. So, okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else besides Chief Greer that wants to talk?
Jim has some updated.
Jim, besides Chief Greer. No, he goes last. Nope. No, you go last.
Oh, I go last.
Jim, come up. There's a reason.
John's expensive.
It was.
It was. It's over.
Um, what I wanted to make you aware of is, I think in the past, Wiley Green has come before council to inquire about. has come before council to inquire about purchasing property adjacent to the um Truth Bible of Church of God property on 8th Avenue East. Um, currently, we have an agreement with them.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we have an agreement with them to allow them to utilize a city property for overflow parking associated with the church. That property is part of a cluster of three properties that the city owns in that area that are shown here. Um, this is the property in particular that currently is in the leasing, uh, or the agreement with the, the church for them to use for overflow parking. We are in the process of our east side drainage project, the one in which we got a significant grant for in order for us to complete. Um, and we're in the process of design for the pond that's going to go on this property. And as a result, it's likely that we are going to have to either modify or terminate the agreement with the church associated with it because it's going to change the shape of what's available to utilize. Um, show you the, this is really rudimentary for you, but these two driveway aisles that are shown on this plan are the drive aisles that currently exist for the church. And the property that they currently utilize encompasses this area here. And this is the outline of the pond that's going there. So, what we've done is kind of taken a look at what would be potentially available if we wanted to either modify it or take a look at the request from the church as to whether or not the city was interested in transferring ownership or selling the property to the church associated with it. So, what's available based upon leaving space for the pond and this buffer in between is about a 65-foot wide area, 378 feet long, and amounts to a little more than a half an acre. Um, it provides enough space for two 20-foot parking lanes as well as a center drive aisle for them to have access in between. That's our rough layout, they can do whatever they want based upon how it is. But I guess the question before council is, to make you aware of, the next step would be for us to pursue a um appraisal for that particular property, redefine that property, and then come back to council and seek whether the council was willing to or interested in the prospect of selling the property to the church.
And would that make their church property contiguous with that whole piece of property?
Yes.
Mayor, just on that front, Chris is here. I don't, I'm not sure that, that's not in a CRA, is it?
Um, yes.
Chris doesn't think so.
It's not? It's not, Chris?
I was thinking in the central CRA.
What is our agreement now with them?
It's on 8th.
It's just a lease agreement?
It's just an agreement for a use of city property as a parking lot, there's no payment that they make to us.
If it's in a CRA, it has to be publicly served.
It's open-ended.
That's the only reason why, I'm Sergeant, yep. I went out there um and talked to Wiley, probably a year ago, and of course, he's sent several emails in to, to Councilwoman Coachman, myself, Jim, and so we had to do this because we had this, this drainage project going on to be, see if we needed the property at all. Um, and it wouldn't, you know, it would be a sale, it'd probably market value, I don't know if they could afford it or not and, and everything. You can make a decision if you want to do something else, but I told Jim, I said, take, let's take it to council and see what they want to do.
I'm sorry, could you just put the other one back that had, is, where you had the hatch, crosshatch on the, are you saying that's the property you want to sell or that's where the stormwater retention is going?
No, that is, that is the property that we would either modify the agreement and say that they can use that portion of the property for their overflow parking, or if the ch, council so chose, it would be a parcel of land that could potentially be sold to the church. The pro, the pond would go.
Okay, thank you. I, I looked at it very quickly and was like, okay, thank you.
Mr. Kramer?
According to the map on the city website, it is Bradenton's CRA.
Yeah, I thought Bradenton's CRA.
Yes.
Yes, it'd be surplus for 30 days.
So, what does that mean?
It means it has to be nationally, it has to be advertised and uh if someone offers to buy it, we'd have to make decisions on who to sell it to. But that's that whole, the case that came out with, of the second DCA in 2021 that overturned an estate attorney general opinion that said that basically, if it wasn't purchased with CRA money, it doesn't have to be, but then this opinion said, no, if it's in a CRA, it has to be.
Now, this, this is something that I believe Mr. Green has come to the city for a number of years, not just in the last two. And this was not ever explained to him that this is CRA and it has to be, you know, advertised and all that before he can, I mean, because the church has used it for.
Right. And I don't think it would be a problem because that, it wouldn't be a buildable lot if we subdivided it and just had that sliver, I don't think it would be buildable, I'd have to check with Robin and Company. So, but it would be a formality that we probably would have to follow to technically meet the requirement of the law.
We never went this far before.
I would defer to Mr. Rudesel for further analysis, but.
We never went this far.
No, we never went this far before because we didn't have the specifics of the sizing on the pond to make sure, because initially, when, when we talked to the design engineers that were working on it, they designed a pond that was going to encompass all three of those properties and we're like, no, don't want to do that. Um, so we had to modify the pond design and come up with a leaving space for this potential.
Mr. Rudesel?
Yeah, I was just going to say that the requirement is, is simply that we put it out there with a notice and that we consider any alternate proposals that are received. It doesn't require the city to go with the highest bid or, or anything like that. The board still has a discretion to make a decision in the best interest of the city, it's just a requirement to invite other offers.
Thanks.
It's only a 30-day requirement, to be honest, we do it fairly quick.
Just, just to show, um, this is the existing church property, this is the property that is currently being utilized in the agreement for the overflow parking, so we're basically.
He's cutting that in here, yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Do you want to talk a little bit about Lewis Park and, and Rossi Park and the Forever Lawn, just with the update you gave me yesterday, I think?
I'm sure. Um, you should have received in your inbox this morning uh an update report that includes uh the photographs and some timelines associated with where we're at. But essentially, um, for Lewis Park, uh, the contractor started installation of the Forever Lawn on Monday. At least one of the, I think the two-to-five uh year-old playground area has had the surfacing installed. Uh, they'll be out there today working on installation of the padding underneath the, the playground equipment for the five-to-12-year-old area. Uh, yesterday, the um, equipment manufacturer came in and installed the uh swing sets on the east side of the park, so those are in place. And work will now proceed to establish the basing material underneath that so that the Forever Lawn can continue onto that side. Um, we're anticipating that fencing will follow next week for the installation of that. Um, and all things being equal, we're hopeful that we'll be at a point near the end of May, that we will be at a completion point for that park.
We are not putting rocks around the playground area.
Yeah, we are not putting rocks around the playground area. Um, the, the rocks that are there are the underlayment for the material. Um, all of the playground has padding underneath it that, it goes underneath the Forever Lawn um to provide a fall zone protection for any of the playground equipment. And I know that people have asked that question because that was the first step of preparatory uh nature for the underlayment of the Forever Lawn. As far as Rossi Park is concerned, um, seeing some great progress there as well. Both of the playground areas have the Forever Lawn installation completed at this point, except for the last step is the entire area gets, gets spread with um a heat absorbent pellet that goes into the fabric of the, the lawn itself to keep the lawn from getting hot. Um, so, there's several areas around the, the central area of the, of the park that have been completed with Forever Lawn installation. Um, provided you some photographs so you can get a, get a look, see it, what it's going to look like, it's going to look fantastic. Um, the final grading for the great lawn, the center area, um, is just about complete. The drainage piping around the exterior of it has been installed, so we expect the installation of that lawn material to start today, hopefully. Um, and with any luck, would be completed by the end of this week, weather dependent. Um, but we're still on track for completion of the area and having it open um for February, I mean, May 8th, which was the original date that we had set for the timeframe for the six weeks of work to be associated with it.
And if I could add, both of those projects are still posted construction zones and I know that we've had people go and want to get on the equipment, particularly at Lewis Park. Please do not allow your children to be on that equipment until we are certain that everything is put there for their safety and that they can enjoy it in a safe and fun fashion. We've had some things already broken on it that we've had to replace and it is posted a construction zone, you are not, you're not supposed to trespass in a construction zone, it's not a safe place for your kids to play.
On that front, just with Rossi Park, I mean, Mayor brought to our, my attention, I think a couple of councils did as well, that with Rossi Park and Music on the Park Friday night, that people would go through there and kind of find cut-throughs to park at, at the Rossi Park parking area and then go over to the amphitheater and we had bicycle barricades, well, if you go down there now, it's all construction fencing. It, it, it's kind of a shame that we have to expend that money to put that up, but that's, it, it applies equal to, to Lewis Park, is that we have a area under construction, there's liability, there's other reasons why people enter those parks to either use equipment or use it at pass-through, and so now we have to basically bring the cost of construction, temporary construction fencing. I will tell you that Rossi Park is pretty well secured, because I run around there and stuff and what I saw from doing that since the construction fencing, and Jim and I went back and forth on it, whether the bicycle barricades were good enough or not, and, and I don't think they would have been, um, and like, and Mr. Peterson's back there, who's done a really good job with it. Um, and, and one more thing about Rossi Park and this Forever Lawn, and I probably have to say this now because I'll forget about it, but Councilwoman Coker brought it up yesterday, is a lot of times we'll construct tents on that great lawn. We can't construct tents with staking, basically, um, through that Forever Lawn, we'll, we'll ruin it. And so, now Special Events Committee now, which, uh, Shelley, if we could, just maybe get it just to Sha, to, to Kelly, um, we're going to have to deny it if there's ten, you know, request for, put permits on that, uh, ten permits on those areas.
I think anything at the, at the great lawn, we've had them use concrete anchors.
Yeah, usually.
Because of the irrigation piping that was there.
Yeah.
Right.
Nothing in the ground.
Well, there's damage.
No penetrations.
So, with, with any luck, uh, as I said, Rossi Park will be uh opened back up on May 8th, that's our plan, is as, as things progress. Um, you'll see some additional things. Um, Mr. Peterson took the additional step associated with, there are five or six benches that, that kind of circled the splash pad. They were metal benches, uh, they were all a royal blue, uh, the, the powder coating had started to fade on them, so he has removed them all, sent them off to have them powder-coated again, but they're going to come back and we're going to have a blue one, we're going to have a green one, we're going to have a red one, we're going to have a yellow one, an orange one, I think, so it'll be all the much more vibrant colors associated with what's down there, so.
I heard blue and orange.
Oh, no, no, no.
There are no garnet and gold options.
There ain't any garnet.
What are those art pieces?
Got a problem. Well, um, the MLK and Love Park, that's CRA, so I'll ask you another time where we are.
Well, uh, what I will tell you is, is that one of the things that we ended up doing at Lewis Park was, in order to avoid cutting down additional trees, um, we kind of shrunk the size of the swing set area. So, as a result, we had pre-purchased the equipment, so we have a set of swing sets that we are intending to take and, and have them installed at MLK Park, which is one of the parks that doesn't have it. And they will also be um ADA compliant swings in order for folks to be able to, to utilize them, so we're moving forward.
Great, thanks.
Is there anyone else before Chief Grier?
That bad, huh?
All right, Chief Grier, welcome.
Uh, thank you. Tim Grier, you're fired, chief. Um, uh, Jim's a hard act to follow. Uh, last week, we participated in the uh Manti County Hurricane Exercise, getting ready for the season. Uh, pretty much everybody that's left in here participated and I really appreciate how their participation and really uh shows um their dedication to the city and, and being ready to participate if we're impacted by a hurricane. Uh, that being said, we'll be getting the city emergency management plan out as soon as we can, uh, some updates are needed. Um, know that we're parade-ready, we've got our, all our mutual aid partners uh ready to come in and participate Saturday, uh, according to plan. Um, Station Two process is moving well, I appreciate, appreciate all those involved. Um, also, over the weekend, we had a uh mandatory evacuation that affected um Tropical Palms in the 14th Street area over to 9th Street, uh, pretty good area there, and uh just wanted you to know that we're working on a resolution to uh get out, working with Scott, uh, to back up Florida uh state statute regarding those types of incidents that'll give us the ability to impose fines in addition to cost recovery, uh, so especially related to directional boring, uh, which is a constant problem here in the county and the city. Uh, so know that I'm working on that and that, you know, we collectively are and we're going to try and move forward a little bit uh quicker on that process, uh, due to the consistent um nature of this. Uh, so, um, I will ask you, I'm sorry, I had a lot more to say than just asking y'all to hang out for a couple of minutes after the meeting, I finally got the new squad here. Uh, I need your presence just for a couple of minutes and then later, uh, through the chief's corner, and Jeannie's going to put out information on that truck to the public and highlight uh some of the areas of response that we cover with that, so. Um, and along with Chief Bevins, I'd like to see your driving skills out on that new driving pad, you know, versus shooting. Uh, so to me, that'd be a little more interesting than the shooting part, so.
Nobody wants to see them.
Inviting everyone out back now, out once.
So anyways, a lot going on, but appreciate y'all and all you do and uh if I could get you after the meeting, I appreciate it.
Where do you want us, chief?
I'm sorry, over, right outside the auditorium by the flagpole?
Thank you.
That's why we saved you for last, so. Anything else will be adjourned. Thank you.
I gotta run to the bathroom.